It is 6:00 PM and I will call this meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. We have a quorum present and we'll start with the pledges.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, the first item on our agenda is the presentation of evidence of excellence awards.
Mr. Lambert, Dr. Morrison, and members of the Board, I'm standing in tonight for Brenda Haas. They've been passing the flu bug around and today it was her turn, so I will be speaking in her place. It only seems appropriate that we choose National Arts and Education Week to give you an update on the project to put student art throughout the Harris Hill Administration Building and to recognize some students for their outstanding work. If you've walked the halls of the Administration Building, I'm sure that you have noticed that a lot of what I like to call hobby lobby art has been taken down and replaced by student artwork from GIST students. The third floor is dedicated to the high school student work. We have installed a cabinet outside the elevator to display 3D work and the career and technical department will also be hanging some student pieces and displaying in three cabinets on the third floor. The second floor will be reserved for middle school art and the first floor will be elementary art. Dr. Chance has also been a driving force behind this project. After walking the space with Brenda Haas and discussing what would be appropriate, Brenda approached Jessica Thompson, the IB art teacher at Garland High School, about making some space for an IB art project. They determined that the two-story open space at the end of the annex, just outside the door here, would make a great place for an IB art project. The students would be able to visit the space, take measurements, and literally create art for the space just like they would do in a business setting. Last year, the IB II art students met with Dr. Chance before each one came up with their own proposal for the space. Marissa Cordova's piece was selected by Dr. Chance and Dr. Barajas. At that point, Marissa picked her team leaders and met after school to generate ideas and the materials needed. Once all supplies were available, they spent the last seven weeks of school assembling the actual piece. Like any project, there was a good helping of setbacks but also moments of genius and remarkable discoveries. The class collaborated seamlessly, both collectively and in their individual bulb groups. Once again, it was a wonderful, real-world opportunity that even more kids got to participate in, learning not just art but the math required to work out the annex spatial restraints along with the quantity of materials needed to create sculptures of that unique size. Together, they brainstormed ideas, found solutions, and created a piece that everyone in the district can be proud of. If you've come in the door and looked up, you'll see that the piece is called "Dawning Aspirations." And at this point, I'd like Marissa Cordova, who was the winning design, to tell us a little bit about her inspiration for the piece and to introduce the members of her design team. Marissa?
Hello. Well, the inspiration for my sculpture was to spread light to our community and inspire others because our whole school district is the future of our country and very young and they should all be inspired to spread light to others all around them, all around the community.
And your design team?
My design team versus Haley Rataball, Tess Omer, and Rachel. Yes, Rachel.
Thank you. And unfortunately, the teacher, Jessica Thompson, also has the flu bug today, so she could not be here, but we're really proud of all of these students and proud of all the students who participated in the design contest and especially the ones who actually did the artwork.
Thank you so much for what you created and for being here today, and we have these certificates as just a little small token of our thanks for the work that you did. Now, we'll note that they haven't been signed yet, so we'll have to take them back up and get them signed, but we didn't get that done. Do any of the rest of you want to have something to say or no? No? Please, no thank you? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. You're welcome. 2014 assessment results. Dr. Kleikamp.
Mr. Lambert, trustees, Dr. Morrison, good evening. What you'll see to present it tonight are all of our results from the Spring of 2014 for STAR 3 through 8, including the three administrations of Grade 5 and 8 Reading and Math, the Spring Administration of the End of Course, as well as the Summer Administration of the End of Course, and then the retesting that we did in TACS from the Spring and the Summer. I'd like to remind Board members that in your comprehensive Board packet that you received in advance of tonight's presentation, you have received copies of the complete summary reports, and we're going to take a look at how to read those here in just a minute. Before we begin, I'd like to draw your attention again to this comparable school districts. I've found that this has been very helpful when talking about our assessment results. As you may remember, I've identified 37 different districts across the state that are most similar to us in their percentage of economically disadvantaged and their percentage of limited English proficient speaking students. There have been four campuses or districts that have been identified as most similar to us in those two characteristics as well as size, and they include Arlington, El Paso, Mesquite, and Richardson. Now, what you'll see is we actually fall kind of right in the middle as far as our size. We're roughly 58,000 according to last year's taper. When you look at Arlington, they're about 12% larger than we are. El Paso's about 9% larger than we are. And then when we look at Mesquite, it's about 33% smaller, and Richardson's about 34% smaller. But they're all plus or minus 20,000 students and the most similar to us. You'll see the results for these other four comparison districts presented throughout these slides. So just a quick reminder of the summary reports. In the upper left-hand corner of all of the summary reports is a little icon that tells you what that's about, a real quick snapshot, whether it's going to be STAR data, STAR Spanish results, STAR linguistically accommodated, STAR modified, or STAR alternate. This is the last administration of the STAR modified test. It will no longer be given beginning with this school year. In addition, the STAR alternate is being redesigned for the upcoming school year. You'll also see icons for TACS and TELPASS. While the state does not require a board presentation of our TELPASS results, I did include them in tonight's packet. They won't be included in the presentation, but they are included in the packet because that does give you some information about the language proficiency of our limited English proficient students. In addition, going down the left-hand columns of the summary reports, you'll see that various student groups have been identified. These include the all-students group as well as the seven race and ethnicities as reported on the answer documents, economically disadvantaged, limited English proficient, as well as those students that are participating in bilingual or ESL programs, special education, and gifted and talented. Another slide that was not included in the draft presentation that you received is what is also included on the report. In addition to the group summaries, you will find assessment summary information such as the average scale score, the number and percentages of students scoring at Level 2 satisfactory, that is the passing standard. You'll see the Level 3 or advanced. When you're looking at those percentages, know that in order to score at the Level 3 level, you must score at the Level 2 level. So then this sample that you'll see here on the screen, that 75% includes the 19% that scored at that Level 3, so they don't add up to 100 if you were to add up those three separate percentages. I've done it, I've questioned myself for doing it. And then you'll see those that did not pass, the Level 1 unsatisfactory students. And then, once you move past those overall test statistics, you get into some interesting information about reporting categories. These are groups of concepts within the content area. So for example, on this sample Grade 3 report, you see that reporting category 3 is geometry and spatial reasoning. There were nine items on this assessment in that concept area. The average number of items answered correctly by GIST students was 6.3 with 70% of those nine items answered correctly. So that kind of information is also available on those summary reports. So now we'll dig into the STAR assessment. A word of note, STAR assessment, our first graduating class with STAR as our graduation requirement, will be the class of 2015, so our seniors right now. So we're going to begin with our third grade reading. And you may have noticed that you did have a red folder at your seats when you arrived today. In your spare time, should you wish, there is a copy of a Grade 3 reading assessment in that folder. We'll explain what other assessments are there as well, but I wanted to provide you with just an understanding of the level of rigor that's required on these assessments. You can see that on that Grade 3 reading, 78% of GIST students met that Phase N1 Level 2 performance standard. We'll talk about Phase N1 real quick. There's been a lot of controversy about the maintaining of the Phase N1 Level 2 standards and the implementation of those Phase N standards with the final recommended standard not going into effect until the 2021-22 school year. And one of the things that I neglected to say earlier in the presentation was that while there's been a lot of controversy about maintaining those standards, this really is good news for Garland students because as we see, we're implementing several new systems such as Skyward and SchoolNet. We're employing new assessments such as MAP and an increased focus on Ready Step and PSAT. We're enhancing our professional development opportunities and updating our curriculum to match the rigor of the STAR assessment. So maintaining that Phase N1 at the state level really is good news for us while we kind of get our decks in a row. Even with that, with our decks kind of wandering around a little bit, we still see 78% of our students in third grade meeting with success on the reading assessment and 72% of our third grade students in mathematics. One of the concerns about the passing standards is that the passing standards right now for third grade, last year's third grade students, a student needed to correctly answer 21 out of the 40 items, 21 or more. 21 out of 40 items is 53% of the items answered correctly. Those aren't GIST standards, those are the state Phase N1 Level 2 standards. On the mathematics assessment, a third grade student needed to correctly answer 59 or more percent of the items correctly. We look at our Grade 4. We're seeing similar trends. We see 76% of our Grade 4 students are meeting with success as defined by Phase N1 Level 2 on the reading assessment. It's better than two of our comparison districts. Actually, it's better than three, equal to one. 72% of our fourth grade students met with success on the mathematics assessment. In order to meet that 70, in order to pass that Grade 4 mathematics, a student had to correctly answer 60% of the items. So you'll see that that item needed to pass or to master at each of the grade levels We go to our Grade 5. Grade 5 is one of the student success initiatives or SSI grade levels. What that means is that a student has three opportunities to meet with success or they may not be promoted to the next grade level without a grade placement committee meeting. Within each administration, there are some intervention meetings that happen with the parents and the teachers and the administrators on the staff to develop an intervention plan. This is different than our response to intervention plans because this is really targeted at helping students acquire the grade level content in order to be successful on the next administration. You can see though that our Grade 5 students met with great success, especially when we compare them to our peer districts or with previous grade levels, with 81% of our fifth grade students meeting with success on the reading assessment on the first administration and 84% of our math students on the first administration. With both of these assessments, a student needed to correctly answer 54% of the items in order to meet that Phase N1 Level 2 performance standard. The next slide just kind of shows you a cumulative overview of the Grade 5 SSI performance after the first administration in April, the second administration in May, and the third administration in June. You can see that cumulatively, after those three administrations, 93% of GIST students met with success, and in mathematics, that cumulative total after the third administration was 94 compared with 91% of our peers in the region and in the state. Looking at our Grade 6, we see that 77% of our students have met with success in reading and 78% in mathematics. Well, it's very similar to trends that we see at the state that does appear to be slightly lower than what we're experiencing in the region and in our peer districts. On the reading assessment, a Grade 6 student had to answer 52% of the items correctly to meet that Phase N1 Level 2 standard, and on the math, a 6th grade student had to answer 42% of the items correctly. While performance is relatively similar in Grade 6 that we've seen in the elementary, about the high 70s that we were experiencing with the exception of Grade 5, this is the first time where we're actually seeing our comparison districts beginning to outperform us. The majority of them are outperforming this beginning at this Grade 6 level. When we go to Grade 7, we see that Grade 7 reading, 75% of our students in GIST met with success. This compares quite favorably with three of the four comparison districts. When we look at mathematics, again, quite favorably with two of the four, with a 64% success rate. You may have noticed that a copy of the Grade 7 mathematics STAR has also been included in your red folder should you desire to take that assessment. These are the first administration results for our Grade 8. Again, we're seeing a lot of success as we saw in the 5th grade reading with our 8th grade reading, with 84% of our students meeting with success, doing quite favorably quite well compared to our peers in other districts as well as the state. We look at our mathematics at Grade 8, we see that we're not doing so well as some of our peers. One of the notes that I might make about these 8th grade scores is that this was one of the very first years that we did not double test our 8th grade students. What that means is we have students in 8th grade, about a quarter of our 8th grade students that are not enrolled in an 8th grade math class. They're actually taking an Algebra 1 class for high school credit. Because they're enrolled in an Algebra 1 class, there is a corresponding Algebra 1 EOC. Those students only took the Algebra 1 EOC and not the 8th grade math as they have in prior years. Okay? And so that may be one of the areas that we're seeing, you know, when we try to compare ourselves to other districts. Now, this has been an area that we have been talking about at the district level and looking at curriculum to see how we can bring up those Grade 8 general math students for that regular Grade 8 content. When we look at our cumulative results, again, we see that after three administrations, 92% of our 8th graders have met with success on reading, 87% of our 8th graders in a general math 8th grade course have met with success. Grade 4 and Grade 7 writing, writing has been an area of the concern across the state since its inception under STAR, and part of this is due to the weighting of the compositions. On the 4th grade assessment, a student can earn up to 44 points. 16 of those 44 points come from the two essays. In order to meet with success, a student needed to answer or get 52% of the total 44 points. On the Grade 7, the essays are weighted. So there are two essays. They have a possibility of eight points for each essay, so a total of 16 points for the two essays, and then they are multiplied times two to give a weight of a total of 32 points out of a possible 72, sorry, I had to move my glasses, 72 total points on the Grade 7 writing. In order to meet that Phase N1 Level 2 standard, a Grade 7 student had to get 54% of the total points available. Now take a look at our Science and Social Studies. That's Science, Grade 5, Grade 8, and then Social Studies, Grade 8. In order to meet with success on the Grade 5 science, which 77% of our students did, they had to answer 59% of the items correctly. On the Grade 8 science, a student needed to correctly answer 56% of the items, which 71% of our students did. And then unlike what we experienced in TACS, our STAR social study scores are lower than we're used to. So I got to digging into this a little bit this afternoon. On this 8th grade social studies assessment, there are 52 questions. Across those 52 questions, there are 52 unique student expectations tested. On any other grade level and content area, you will see most of the student expectations tested two, three, four, or more times. Social studies is one of the only assessments where there's only one item per SE. And I had a conversation with our social studies curriculum coordinator today, Caleb, and he was telling me about the level of specificity within those student expectations, and it's not just explained, it may be explained, described, and several other adjectives all packed into that one social studies student expectation that will then be pulled out into a single question on the assessment. We're going to move into our Spring End of Course exams, and these results are presented here on the screen for the first-time testers. So these are students that have never participated in the English 1 or English 2 assessments. We can see that students are meeting 72% of our GIST students met that Phase N1 Level 2 and 74% of our English 2. This is the redesigned English 1 and English 2 assessment. So on this assessment, there is a total of 92 possible points. In English 1, a student has to correctly answer or get 53% of the points. In English 2, they needed 54%. They get 18 points from two short answer questions. They get 24 points from one essay, and then the other 50 points come from a multiple choice. Moving on to the other three content areas for End of Course, we can see that 87% of our Algebra 1 students met with success, first-time testers, 94% of our Biology students, that's something to be extremely proud of, look really good, as well as 94% of our US History, only one other comparable district performed better than we did on the US History. And because I like a challenge, a copy of the US History STAR End of Course is also included in your red folder, and you may not ask Justin Graham for any help because he has told me that he could answer it, so you can't ask him for help on that. All right, finally, the July STAR End of Course results. Now, the July End of Course for the region and for our comparable districts is not expected to be released until September 12th, but because I was going ahead and giving this full presentation, I didn't want to delay that information. The state has provided preliminary information. So when we look at our July End of Course retesters, we can see that we had 980 students participate in the English 1 and 47% of those met with success, and when we compare that to the state, only 41% of students statewide met with that same level of success, so we are six points higher than the state preliminary numbers. You'll see similar trends across all content areas with Algebra 1 being our all-time high. We tested 337 students, 41% met with success compared with 31% of our peers in the state. A couple of TEA press releases, hopefully you got to these in your packets. I know they were at the end, but this is probably where some of the good information, I think, is held. TEA has put out three press releases during the late spring and early summer. One of the things when those arrive in my email box, I'm like, this is good information, but now what does that mean for us? And so this is something that I've done for our administration and then included in your presentation tonight, was because it takes what the state's putting out as accomplishments and provides you with a comparison to what are those same accomplishments in the district. So if you were to look at the very first one, the May 29, 2014, you can see that this is the Grade 3 through 8 performance on last spring, and you can see that the state's reporting how students in each grade level in math and reading on Page 1 and in the other content areas on Page 2 of the press release, how they did in each of the last three years on their STAR performance, as well as calculates a change. So if we look at just the first 3rd grade mathematics, we can see that the first year of STAR, the state had 67% passing, then went up to 69, and then went up to 70, and it was a 1% increase from the last two years. The district started at 77, we went to 75 the following year, 72 the next year, and that was a negative 3% decrease between the last two years. This is one of the reasons why the commissioner has proposed staying at Phase N1, because unlike previous assessment systems where each year we've gotten better, this new STAR assessment program, the scores have kind of remained flat except for a handful of districts that have been in the news within the last week. The second press release dated June 4th is about the STAR End of Course exams. You'll see similar information is on the last press release with performance over the last three administrations and with change scores differences in the last two administrations. For example, Algebra 1, the state started at 82, saw 82% the second year and 86% the third year. In Garland ISD, with our Algebra 1 testers, we started at 82 the first year, 84% the second year, and 87% the third year. The final press release dated June 11th is the STAR End of Course, and in this press release, TEA acknowledged that they had 81% of students statewide that had met with success on all five of their End of Course exams. When we pulled the similar data for the district, we've got several students that haven't participated in all five exams. I flipped to my numbers real quick. The number's approximately 258. What I'm not able to tell in the available data is if a student, let's say, moved in from a different state and had Algebra 1 credit from Louisiana, and we gave them that Algebra 1 credit from Louisiana, that student is no longer required to take the Texas Algebra 1 assessment. So for these 258 students, it's difficult to determine whether or not they're responsible for that End of Course assessment without actually going through student by student, which is what our counselors do. So you can see that when we tried to pull similar information for the district, we currently are sitting with 76.5% of the class of 2015 that have successfully met with success on all five of their assessments, and this was after the May administration, so it does not include any of our summer administration results that we'd most recently received. A real quick look at TACS. Our last group of TACS graduates should have graduated last spring with a class of 2014, and we may still have some students in enrollment that need TACS as a graduation credit if they also don't have enough course credit to graduate and complete their graduation requirements. So you'll see that we're looking at ELA on this line. We've got the March administration followed by the April administration results. You'll see that there are, within parentheses underneath each of the district as well as our comparison district, two sets of numbers. If you look at GIST, it says number equals 122 and 66. That means that in March, we had 122 students participate in that March assessment, and in April, we had 66% of our students, or 66 students that tested in that administration. What I'd like to point out is that 66 number on that April administration. Earlier, I noted in the very first one, we were looking at the bubble graphs, the size differences and indicating that Arlington was 12% larger than we were and El Paso was 9% larger. Well, when you compare the number of testers in April for Garland with El Paso, El Paso actually tested 192% more students than Garland, but they're only 9% larger than we are. Similarly, if we were to pull out Richardson, who is 34% smaller than Garland, Garland only tested 12% more students than Richardson did. Next slide's going to point out mathematics. Again, similar information. You've got the numbers tested down there in parentheses within each administration. That's the success rate of the retesters either at the March administration or the April administration. What I'd like to point out is that while GIST has larger percentages, on the last slide when I said the district is this much percentage- slide, when I said the district is this much percentage larger than we are or smaller, but what our comparisons are based on those numbers. In this one, we have larger percentages of students participating in the mathematics assessment compared to our comparison districts, but you can see that we are meeting with more success, especially at that April administration date, than any of our comparison districts. A look at our science data for the same retesters in March and April. Again, you can see the numbers. Forty-four percent of our March testers met with success, and twenty-six percent of our April testers. Again, that April administration showing great improvements in comparison to our other similar districts. And finally, looking at the social studies, I'd like to point out when looking at that thirty-eight percent on the April administration, thirty-eight percent success with sixteen students participating. You'll notice that Mesquite does not have an April administration because they only tested seven students, and if you have fewer than ten students, the summer report is not going to report any information. And finally, this is one of my favorite graphs because it takes a look at the students that were in grade twelve at the end of the year, going all the way back to two thousand and five. And then it takes a look at the bottom of the line with the squares is the actual number of students that by the end of their senior year still have not met with success on the tax assessment. And you can see that since two thousand and nine, that the relative percentage has actually gone down. So I posed this question in my office, I said, what happened in two thousand and seven that we saw an all-time high that year? What happens is that tax was implemented with a phase in schedule similar to STAR, except that it was a one-year phase in schedule. So in two thousand and five, students had to meet the two standard error of measure or two SEM standard. The following year, in two thousand and six, they had to meet the one SEM standard. And in two thousand and seven, they had to meet that final panel recommended standard. And so that's when we peaked, and then we've seen decreases since then. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Dr. Kestner?
Thank you. Dr. Claykamp, you were talking about the difference in the eighth grade Algebra One testers, but wouldn't, do you think, or do you know if the other districts also did not double test their students? Because if we were the only ones to double, to not double test, but other districts made different decisions?
That's a great question.
That would be one issue, but if everyone decided not to double test, then we would be looking at comparable data. So what are we really, what we're really looking at?
The commissioner came out with a statement prior to testing that said, do not double test. So none of the other districts statewide in a region or a comparison district should have double tested.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so it really does show the differential, and it is comparable?
Yes, and that is a discussion we're having.
Ms. Rax?
First, I'd like to point out that after thirty years of teaching history and fifteen at IB level, I don't think I need Mr. Graham's assistance.
Yay!
On the, the English, I noticed the last statement on the entire report, and by the way, thank you very much, this is excellent report.
Thank you.
That one of the, one of the statements there was that the largest number of students, both statewide and in Garland, who still needed to take a, an end of course test, were in the areas of English Two. And then it was, English one was the third ranking one in the state and the second ranking one for Garland. Can you give us any explanation? Normally, in the past, with other testing programs, kids have had more trouble with science and mathematics than they have with the English and, and, and language arts. Could you explain anything about that that might help us?
Sure, a lot of that has to do with the weighting of the compositions. At the high school level, there hasn't been a writing composition included in the ELA tax, it's strictly been a multiple choice with a couple of short answer. So adding in the writing component to the English one has really increased the rigor, but also adjusted the weighting scale. When we look at grade four and grade seven writing under tax, it accounted for about four points out of the total possible. And as long as you scored a two or better, then if you got enough of the multiple choice items correctly, you could pass the assessment. That's not so under the STAR program, because the writing samples, the two compositions or the one composition in English one and English two, actually contribute their own separate points. And so under tax, where if we could shoot and get our kids to at least a two, we were with success. Well, under STAR, if we get our students to at least a two out of a possible four points for each composition that then is multiplied, we're only, we're taking away fifty percent of those points possible for that writing composition.
That brings up another question for me. I noticed that there, there, the writing is judged by two graders. I assume that with the number of students in the state of Texas taking this, that's a vast number of graders statewide. Do we have anything about inter-rater reliability among, on these people and their gra, their scoring?
I believe that TEA may have something on that. I, I know that they go through significant training, and I know that when they grade the compositions, that they have to be within one point of each other. So if I grade a composition and say it's a three, and you grade a composition and say it's a two, we're within a point, and so those two will be added together to be a five. However, if I say it's a four, and you say it's a two, then it goes to a third reader to do the inter-rater reliability.
Okay. Are we talking about Tellpass yet, or is that coming later?
Well, I've put that in the presentation. It's not really part of the discussion, but it's there, but we can bring it up and speak to it if you would like to.
I was just, when I was reading through it, I started out with the kindergarten. And are we having kindergartners write a sample?
So at the kindergarten and first grade level, it's a holistic assessment in all four domains, so listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Now, they do collect writing samples, five of them, and they do put them in a portfolio, but the writing samples that you would expect from a kindergarten is different from what you'd expect from a third grader, sixth grader, or so on. But yeah, they're writing throughout the curriculum, not just our ELL students, but all of our students. But we are collecting those writing samples as part of that Tellpass. Yes.
Thank you.
Also, speaking to, oh, sorry, did a real quick comment on the Tellpass. In addition, reading is also a holistic assessment at grades K and one. It's not until second grade that our ELL students get on the computer to participate in the Tellpass reading.
Ms. Claykamp, go ahead.
Thank you. Could you bring back the slide, the EOC algebra slide? When we spoke this afternoon, we were talking about the anomaly of middle school math, but then we get to algebra and it looks okay. So what would you suggest is the problem that seems to exist, and what would you suggest might be the solution?
So one of the things I think that we're finding is that in previous assessment years, because our algebra students participated in the on-grade level assessment, prior to there being an end of course, eighth grade Algebra One students took the eighth grade tax exam. With the implementation of STAR, eighth grade students that were participating in Algebra One took both the eighth grade STAR and the Algebra One. So it wasn't until we actually didn't have these students participating that we realized that they were actually masking some of the concerns that we're now seeing.
And would you suggest some solutions? Or is that between yourself and Dr. Chance, Dr. Wells, maybe they would like to address those issues?
I would just respond to that. With the eighth grade students ramping up the rigor with the curriculum rewrite that we're working on, will help us with that. The students that are in eighth grade taking Algebra One are typically your advanced students, so that's why you see the masking. But our eighth grade math students can also kind of get some more of those advanced skills to help them with the, with the STAR exam. The STAR exam is a little bit rigorous, but we can match our curriculum to that rigor to get those math eight students, which typically are following the general path to math, not an advanced path, but we can still ramp up the rigor in that math eight and math seven and regular math six. And that's what we're working on now.
Just follow-up question for you, Dr. Wells. There was an article in the last week in the Dallas Morning News that the math standards are accelerating. So subjects that were taught in like, let's say, seventh grade are now having to be mastered in the fifth grade.
Absolutely.
Ninth grade, seventh grade. So as we're trying to increase our scores, the curriculum seems to be getting more difficult.
It is. The math teaks were recently realigned and changed, so you're right, as a fifth grader, you may be reaching up to the eighth grade to pull a teak down into that fifth grade class. So it's, it's already inherently a little bit more rigorous with the new alignment. We just adopted a new resource, Envision Math 2.0, which is all completely realigned to match the new standards. So the state has done a little bit of that for us, and as we rewrite and align to this new math teak alignment, it will, it will help guide us.
And again, the dichotomy where the commissioner says, we're going to stay with the old test scores, with the old standards, yet we're increasing the difficulty of the math courses, and that we're not getting higher results with the old testing. So where do you think that's going to lead to?
So the revision of curriculum standards is an ongoing process. It goes through a cycle, and so that was just, it was the cycle, it was time to revisit the math standards and make sure how, or the math teaks, to update that alignment. So that was one of the justifications that the commissioner used in keeping them at Phase N one, was the implementation of the new math teaks in the assessment program. So for example, in addition to keeping Phase N one standards, he's also waived the SSI requirements in math for grade five and eight students this year. So they will only have that first administration. They won't have a second or third administration because the actual standards won't be set until late in the summer.
Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Wells, Dr. Chance, we, we obviously are doing very well as compared to our, our comparison districts, and, and you guys and all of us in the district deserve praise for that, and I want to make sure that that, that gets stated. But what I'd like to know is, is give, give us an example or two of what we're doing in order to, to improve these things. Give me some, some general examples of, of what you attribute that success to, and also what we're doing to make it even better.
I think we have several examples of what we're trying to work on. First of all, the curriculum writing project, we have over two hundred teachers that we've invited in as curriculum writers for the district. So they're working with the curriculum coordinators, they're from schools across the district, and they're helping us to align and get things to the level of rigor. We're using a research-based framework, which is aligned with our strategic plan, understanding by design, and it's the UBD framework, if you've ever heard that. But it's a backwards planning, so you start with the end in mind. Where do we want the kids to end up? And then we plan the lessons to get them there. And all of this will go into our nice tool that we're training on, which is the SchoolNet system, which you all helped us to approve last year. Teachers will be able to get on there, and really lessons are laid out appropriately, resources will be available at the fingertips, everything to help them to reach that level of rigor and to align to the teaks as we should align to get the students to mastery. Professional development, approving the director of professional development, we have already brought in several PD sessions for teachers to help them with engagement, to help them with unpacking the standards, to help them with the new teaks and these new resources that we've just adopted. So those are several things that we've just now started. I would also mention the intervention model. We've brought on twelve new schools this year. If you saw the results in elementary school, they're pretty phenomenal if you look at the results there. So we have a little work to do in middle school, and the alignment is really going to help us with that. But the intervention program is working very well at the elementary level, too. So those are the ones that come off the top of my head. There's, there's a lot of things that we have in place, but we're very excited about the possibilities, and we're working hard to get all of these things in place to see the results in the future.
Great. Thank you for those examples. Dr. Claykamp, oh, Mr. Claykamp.
Dr. Wells, along those lines, could you talk about the effect that the implementation of Avid district-wide is having?
I didn't mention Avid or NIMSE or any of those things. I mean, we have lots of great things happening. But Avid is another one. When you have students that are the first-time collegegoers and you teach them the skills that Avid brings, WICRA strategies, just organizational strategies, having the tutors come in and help the students. We have several schools that are on the brink of applying to be Avid, Avid National Demonstration Schools, and we know we have a couple already there. But all of these great programs will come in, and we will see the results, because our kids, we're already starting to see the gains in, in certain areas. So those are, those are very good programs that have proven results.
Yeah, and one of the things that we've always asked for is, in the comparisons, is to compare ourselves with not only the state, but Region Ten, which I think is a more applicable, and we did really, really well this time compared to Region Ten. So again, congratulations.
Right.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes, Ms. Griffin?
We have, and I agree that this is an outstanding report, but when we start talking about and answering President Lambert's question in terms of what can we put our hands on in terms of why the success? Is there a rubric? Is there a graph? Is there something of our seventy-four campuses that we can go down as we look at the detailed data, that we can say, here are all of our elementaries, at this elementary, this is the program that was implemented, these are the programs? Because I know everything is not being implemented at every school, because I think we're trying to do differential instruction and tailor things to the climate and the culture of that school. So is there a cheat sheet of something that we can go and look to and we can see as we track all of this success, that we can go back and really know what was done on that campus and why it was successful?
I'll give one example. We looked at intervention campuses and how well their students did compared to non-officially implemented intervention campuses, and we saw great gains at those campuses. So that's one example. If we want to look at intervention schools, we can pull those schools and look at how the results.
But I'm really talking about all our schools, elementary, middle school, and high school.
It depends on them.
And so if we look at each of those campuses, we should know what was put in place, what was put in place last year, what was put in place this year, and as we continue to look at the trend for five years, we could go back and see what worked on each of those campuses. Does something like that exist? Because we have a detailed report by campus, that if we want to go and look and see the success, can we see all of the new programs that are implemented on the various campuses to be able to track? I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about for me, to look at the various campuses. If I want to pick out campus ABC, I can pick it out and I can go and say, oh, they had Avid, oh, they had intervention, oh, they had this and they had that.
I would say yes.
So can we develop something? Because once we develop it, it's just a matter of updating it.
I would say this too, Ms. Griffin, all of those things you're saying we can do, especially with SchoolNet, we have the ability to create customized reports, whereas if we're going to look at Avid, if we want to look at intervention schools, anything that you can think of, any program that we're developing, we can pull those reports in SchoolNet.
But is it a composite? So I don't want to...
Well, this is a new program, so this is something we can do.
I don't want to look at, here's Avid, and I got to go through the list, and here is the SchoolNet.
You can pull multiple, multiple variables into one report.
Okay.
So you would like just a real quick reference chart of all of the campuses, and which ones are Avid, and which ones have had the intervention?
I just think it's an advantage. I don't know what the other trustees may think, but I just think it's advan, it's an advantage to having that when we're implementing so many new programs.
I think that can be created.
Any other questions? All right. Dr. Claykamp, thank you very much. Presenting lengthy data in a good format, as usual, thank you. Okay, the next item on our information items is review of the cooperative purchasing report, and I believe this is Mr. Booker?
To Mr. Lambert, to the board members present, to Dr. Morrison, each year, the district is required to present a report to the Board of Trustees identifying the management fees that we've paid in use of cooperatives throughout the year. That report is provided for your review and information.
Is there any questions with regard to this report? Ms. Booker, thank you very much. Did we have any cards? No cards today, okay, so then we will move past our public forum and move into discussion items. The first item on the discussion is our trustee report. Does any trustee have any, anything they'd like to share with regard to recent district or community events, announcements? or community events, announcements regarding upcoming events? This would include our calendar, which I'll talk about a little bit, but if anybody wants to talk about particular things or recognition or outstanding performance of staff, students, programs, special activities. Ms. Griffin, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Axe.
Mr. Glick, hello? Mr. Glick and I attended a literacy event at Dougherty Elementary School. It was sponsored by Altrusia. And we were able to read with children. I got kindergarten, so I won. But it was, it was a really nice event and it was well done. We had several former mayors and our current mayor of Garland was there. And I also attended the NIMSE kickoff and I was very impressed with that group and, and the plans that they've presented for our, for our district and the schools that are participating.
Mr. Glick, do you have anything?
Yes, this is more along the lines of maybe nostalgia, but I, I remember when I was in, in grade school and even in high school, we used to call it Open School Week. And my parents would go and meet with the teachers and you always waited to hear what the teachers had to say, are you a good student or not? And last night, Rowlett High School had Meet the Teacher Night, which is replacement. And this was the last time I'm going to do that because my son's a senior at Rowlett High School. So it was, there was some enjoyment, but also a little sadness for the last time that was going to happen. And I did get a good report, so.
Well, that's good. I, I, I won't be saying that for a long time, that it's my last one. But anyway, Dr. Castaneda.
Thank you, President Lambert. Yeah, I've been busy attending community events. I've gone to two football games, heading to another one this week. So it's fun to see the new stadium. It looks great. The renovated Homer Johnson Stadium looks fantastic. Attended with my colleague here to my right, the Echo Lab Reception. And that business in Garland has just been such a great partner for us for 28 years. I think the foundation director said they've been giving grants to our teachers. And this year, I think it was about $50,000 of grants to our teachers, which will help benefit our students, which meets one of our strategic goals in the partnership area. New teacher orientation, lots of trustees were there as well. It's good to see our new eager teachers coming with a range of experience from zero years to 20-plus years. It's always great to see who the new folks are and welcome them in our very special way here. And I, too, attended Meet the Teacher Night and got thoroughly lost at Garland High School. It's a very confusing campus with few directional signs. So I had the true freshman experience. I think I looked probably just as dazed as any freshman on their first day. It was fun.
Mr. Nag.
Meet the Teacher Night, I think our family has put that one astern. It's been a long time, but I did receive some artwork from Walnut Glen Academy. And they were challenged this week to solve a creative problem by designing an illustration around an unusual object, a clothespin. And I got this wonderful piece of art in the mail and they asked if I would display this prominently, and I couldn't think of any place at my house that would be prominent. And so I thought, well, I'll just put it on the front of the board table. So for, this is for Wesley from Walnut Glen. And he took the clothespin, made it into the mouth of a dragon that's breathing fire while it attacks a castle. So maybe we'll see if we can get him appointed Commissioner of Education. I think he's on, on track there.
That's an excellent idea, Mr. Nag. I should have brought, should have brought mine. Mine was from Bryce at Walnut Glen and, and he used the clothespin to, to make the tail on a salamander. And it was a fine-looking salamander. I, I'm always impressed with people that can draw because that's not my forte. But I also attended Meet the Teacher Night. I did not go to all three. It was divide and conquer. So I went to the, to the fourth grader, meet the teacher. And, and of course, my daughter had a great time. But, but I will say that the teachers that I spoke to were very excited about the opportunities that, that were, that will be given by the new Skyward program and were very excited about the opportunities for project-based learning. And, and so I was pleased to hear that. And then there's one other thing that I saw a copy of. For those of you that are aware of, and by the way, although I'm going to make a statement about one particular employee, I would love to hear everybody's stories and would have, be happy to share any and all of them, but I'm just going to share this one that I just got most recent. As you know, when we had our convocation, our, our speaker talked about the runners. And this was an email from, from one of our field service supervisors about a runner at Webb and was praising our new principal, Mr. Kenneth Johnson at, at Webb Middle School, saying, "What an amazing change in, in morale and positive environment that has occurred over a short few weeks of time." And most importantly, the thing that I thought was telling and, and I, I've always, I've always looked at folks and saw the way they treated, for example, people that were providing a service to them. And, and how you treat people like that, to me, is a good indicator of your, of what kind of person you are. And they were talking about the fact that this, the principal was motivating and giving positive feedback to the food service folks and that they were excited and fired up. And to me, that's somebody that's, that's a, that's a real runner and I was pleased to see that and just wanted to share that with you. And, and I know that, that obviously we've got lots of great runners in the, in the district and I just want to share that one. Let's talk for a minute about our, our calendar. Trustees, please, I'm running through this quickly, so if I forget something, just pipe up, please. We've got, obviously, we've got our chamber luncheons. I, I think Dr. Morrison is speaking tomorrow at the, at the Rowlett Chamber, so let's keep that in mind if you have the opportunity to be there. And let me see, obviously, we've got football games coming up. We have got the NAACP Freedom Fund Brunch and Silent Auction coming up on the 13th. On the 18th, a reminder, I hope all of you can, can be at the North Texas Area Association of School Boards meeting that we are, are hosting. It's on Thursday instead of a Wednesday, so that's a little bit of a difference. And I know that we've got some football games on that night. But we wanted to be able to have it at the Curtis Caldwell Center and unfortunately, that was the date that we could have for venue. So I hope to see you there. And I'm not going to really talk about October at this early stage because we'll have another meeting to talk about it. But did I miss anything on the calendar, trustees? Oh, oh, obviously, at the end of the month, we've got TASCASB convention. And so that's always going to, that's going to be a good opportunity for us. And Mr. Glick is pointing out, oh, Dr. Morrison will be speaking at the Garland Chamber Event, which is the last, what, two weeks from Monday? Right? Right. Am I forgetting anything else? I want to make sure that we're aware of the things that we're doing and, and we will move on now to future agenda items. Does anybody have a future agenda item that we haven't already discussed that, that you'd like to make sure we present? Okay, good. We're good in that department. Now, next on our consent agenda, trustees note that this is a little bit different than we've done in the past and it's not exactly the way I intended it to be, but, but it's my fault for miscommunication on this, so bear with me. As you know, the last time we, last month, when we considered bids, we put it on a consent agenda and approved it that, that very day without moving it to the next, to the next board meeting. For, for trying to be more efficient in, in moving through some of the items that we have that, that do not arise to have a whole lot of discussion. The way our agenda appears tonight is to consider the approval tonight of all of these items in the consent agenda. Now, originally, my thought was we would put the renewal bids on there because they customarily do not require a great deal of communication. But, but let me just be clear, I'm not trying to suggest that we shouldn't have more discussion or, or move the, any of these to the next board meeting if there are any items which you want to have more time to study, have questions about them, or, or anything further. So, for example, we can certainly move the new bids if, if that's what, if that's what you want to do. But renewal bids, I'd like to try to move through them and approve them to the extent that we can. But if any of the trustees want to pull any item, then we'll do that. Now, I just say that for purposes of introduction. We're going to have Mr. Booker come up and do a general report with regard to each of these, and then we'll take up action, if any, with regard to these items after we've had the report and you can make your decision on whether any of them need to be pulled. So, Mr. Booker.
To Mr. Lambert, to the board members present, to Dr. Morrison, we do have before you five new contracts or new bids before you for your consideration. The first one that I would bring to your attention is that of the police officers or security officers. I have provided you a revised list. The original list included a district employee. That employee's name has been removed from the list and the list that you have now is the accurate list. This contract, this contract is a one-year contract with two annually renewable options. These are police officers that are utilized at various district football and volleyball games and other extracurricular activities throughout the district. The next contract before you is for the instructional material, equipment and service catalog. The district solicited RFPs for those materials. There's a list of providers. This is one of a series of instructional material and service providers that we'll be offering throughout the year. This one is valued at $5 million. District recommends approval of that one as well. The next contract is for telecommunications, equipment, parts and service. You'll notice that we are utilizing or recommending a new provider. It was a single award or a single response. There are only three major players in the market, one of which said they didn't have sufficient time. Another one gave us pretty good justification as to why they did not respond because the pricing is very competitive, in fact, lower than what we've paid in the past. The district is recommending moving forward with that award. The next contract before you for your consideration is portable moving services. That is utilized by our school facilities for the movement of portables. We certainly recommend the primary two solar systems doing business at McMillan Movers. Estimated value of that contract is $100,000. The last new contract before you for your consideration is My Language 360 Online, which is the program that gives us access to the classes for our Mandarin Chinese. Those are the five new contracts that we have before you for consideration.
All right. And why don't we pause at this point and, and take any questions with regard to the, the new contracts? Dr. Castaneda.
Mr. Booker, it's nice to see you. Can you just clarify for me the difference in the pay rates for the vendors for the security services? I see that some have notes of lieutenant, some have working on lieutenant, but others don't have any annotations in there. There's a difference, yeah.
Right. The, the additional rate or the higher rate, the $40 are for supervisors. Those are the supervisors that work the activities.
Okay.
So they're paid the additional rate over the workers.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying that. And thank you to Dr. Wells for the additional information. That was very helpful and very insightful.
Mr. Axe.
The Language 360 program, is that the same one that we're using for some other languages like Vietnamese and Arabic and things of that nature? Is that a different program?
Mr. Axe, My Language 360, we use for Mandarin Chinese and American Sign Language.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Axe, I assume you were done. Okay. Anybody else have any questions about the new, new bids?
It's not a question. I would just like to pull Item 6B2 for two weeks from now.
Okay. All right. This is consent agenda, which is B, B2. Instructional Materials, Equipment and Service Catalog. Okay? All right. Mr. Booker, why don't you go ahead and continue on with our renewal bids?
Yes, sir. The first contract for renewal is boiler and chiller repair. Send its second renewal for $250,000. That's utilized by our maintenance department. The next contract before you for renewal is for Apple computer equipment. That contract is in its fourth annually renewal. Estimated value of that contract is $4 million. The next contract before you for your consideration is the renewal of the network services or purchase of metropolitan area network services. Future Comm is the recommended supplier. Estimated value of that contract is $975,000. That contract is in its first of two annually renewable options. The next contract before you is for purchase of hand soap and dispensers. It's in its first of two annually renewable options. Estimated value of that contract's $112,000, utilized by our maintenance and custodial department. The next contract that we have before you for renewals is the purchase of professional staff development. This is the first of four annually renewable options. The estimated value of that contract's $500,000. And then we have the purchase of onsite student instructional programs and services. It's first of four annual renewable periods. Estimated value of that contract is $200,000. And we have the purchase of concessionaire services utilized by the Curtis Caldwell Center. The district is recommending renewal of that contract to Ed Campbell Concessions. Estimated value of the contract, that's revenue produced from the contract of $145,000. That contract is in its fourth and final year for renewal.
All right. Questions regarding the renewal bids under Section C? Mr. Glick.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to go to Item C2, Mr. Booker. I'm just, I think the language is correct, but we talk, we talk about the fourth of four annual multiple times and then the memorandum to you dated August 18th, we talk about the fourth of five renewals. My assumption would be it's the fourth of four.
Mr. Glick, I'll, that particular contract actually does not have a expiration date, so I'll need to go back and just verify for sure what is the, because when we instituted that Apple contract, there was not actually a termination date. I think it was originally brought as a five-year contract, so I would assume it's going to be the fourth of four.
Could we then pull that one, too?
Yeah.
All right. Let me make sure. That, that was C2?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. C2, Apple Equipment, Software and peripherals is, has moved to the consent agenda for, for next, next board meeting and we'll, we'll get a, expect an answer with regard to Mr. Glick's question. Other questions?
Yes.
Ms. Glick, yeah, I was going to ask you whether or not she still had a question about the professional staff development.
Yeah, professional staff development consulting services. I'm confused on how many times we, we see this, and sometimes the, the vendors are the same, and sometimes they're new, but I don't know the philosophy behind, behind every time we come and see this as a renewal bid. Is the list, the awarded suppliers, are all of these new? That's in our, in our board book? On some of our bid processes, we have used that asterisk to identify who's new. So I see this list, so am I to assume that these are repeat or?
If it's a, if it's a renewal, Ms. Griffin, and the asterisk is there, that just indicates at the time of the initial award, they were a new award.
So why do we have to have so many bids on professional staff development consulting services?
We, we are responding to the needs of the schools and departments as it relates to new staff development efforts that are available and out there that our children need. We have recently, Dr. Wells and Nelson Orta, who's in charge of the Professional Development Department, developed a schedule that we'll be presenting to the elementary and secondary teachers on Thursday at principals, at the Level One meeting, to basically identify a calendar of all of the different RFPs that are being scheduled to allow them to identify needs and respond to and get us the information that we need to get those new contracts approved in accordance with the statute. So the, the, in summation, Ms. Griffin, we are adding new vendors to the list as required by statute by either an RFP or using a cooperative contract.
And I noticed that the funding is from several sources, and how do we determine that? And what's the process that the new vendors are being added? We're saying that we're satisfying a staff development need, but what is the process? And I hear you referring to Level One. I'm assuming that's a process that's been established.
Principals have a campus improvement plan that's aligned to the district improvement plan. They have goals in that plan, and they have the autonomy to reach out and, and to the business office to say, this is a vendor that I would like to use. If they're not currently on the approved list, purchasing. If they're not currently approved, then Mr. Booker helps them by saying, okay, the RFP is posted. You may get this, this person to respond so that we can have them approved to use them in the district. So we're giving them a schedule to show them, this is when these particular RFPs will be posted. If you plan to bring someone in for staff development, say in January, then you have time to get this person on as an approved vendor, if they're not already. The level meeting is a principal's meeting we have before Team GSD, and the principals pretty much are the ones that need the services to meet their goals.
So each campus is having the ability to identify their own professional development provider?
Based on their campus improvement plan, which you'll get, you get them every year. Campus improvement plan.
I know what the campus improvement plan. Give me an example of what I would see
Okay.
in a campus improvement plan, and then how a new vendor would be added? Because vendors are always trying to come in the district and, at the end of the month, we'll be bombarded by all those that we see in the exhibit hall and just walking around, you know, at the convention. So I'm just trying to figure out the criteria in which a vendor is chosen.
So perhaps a campus principal has identified that their teacher needs some type of specific small group instruction training. We offer that as a district, but maybe they find something that's more customized to their goal in their campus improvement plan, and they found something that offers that, and that, that's our job to kind of help them get that resourced into the district if that's something they need to use for their campus improvement plan. They, they set those goals, and they, we help monitor them through the CIP review process, but that's how they meet their campus goals each year, is to design their PD to match their budget expenditures with the professional development design, with everything that they're purchasing on their campus is really supposed to help them reach their goals and their, their performance-based goals. How do you get your school to perform? Well, these are the things that I need to help my school perform, and that's a principal's choice.
And who is establishing the budget? Is that, is the budget on that campus for professional development? Because this, this new centralized, I guess, controlled, organized approach to our professional development is good, but now, how do they know? How much money do they have for various? Because the campus improvement plan is not going to say that they have $1 million to spend for this particular professional development. So how are the costs determined?
Campus budgets are allocated by Dr. Barajas's team, and they also receive Title I funds.
I know, and I'm just asking, what is that process? So they, in their budget, whatever they have identified for professional development, that's what they have to work with this year in identifying all of these new services that they want.
Or more, are they wanting to reallocate funds at the year mark for another project into staff development, or is they getting assistance from their title funds, which most of our campuses are? So it's, it's not a some certain amount. It's, it can change throughout the year based on their needs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then. We, we've had the request to, to pull under new bids, B2, Instructional Materials, and under renewal bids, C2 as well, Apple Equipment and Software. So having those two pulled, is there action proposed with regard to the new bids and renewal bids?
Move to approve the new bids as proposed and discussed here, with the exception of those pulled for the next meeting's agenda.
Second.
All right, those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that passes six-zero. All right. We, with regard to the consent agenda, we skipped over a list of qualified investment brokers, so let's, let's take that up. And then, right, we'll take that, too. Is that, Dr. Barajas, is that your report or is that Ms. Rountree?
What you have before you tonight is one of our annual reviews that we do every year. The list before you tonight is the list of qualified brokers. We've gone back to everyone that was on our list previously, and we've sent back out to them our investment policies. We've sent out to them also forms that they needed to complete regarding certification of our policies, and also acknowledgement that they had read the investment policy as well. So the list you see before you are the responses that we've received from the specific organizations, and this is the list we recommend for the upcoming year.
Thank you, Ms. Rountree. Is there any further questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and then also on our consent agenda is tax refunds. Ms. Holmes?
This month, we have 11 taxpayers receiving refunds. The total of these refunds are $110,853.97. Are there any questions? Most of them are agreed judgments. There are a couple of prorated exemptions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions with regard to the, to the refunds? No questions? And I think you've got the next item, which is
Yes, yes.
Consider approval of struck-off properties.
Uh-huh. The city's got four properties. The first one, they've received an offer from Judson Stafford for the property at 501 Rosewood Hill Drive in the amount of $20,000. This property was struck off to the city in September of 2013. The dispersment worksheet shows that Garland ISD would receive a total of $6,244.41 for that property. The other one, there's a proposal from Michael and Kimberly Turner for a property at 151 Lake Drive in the amount of $10,000. The property was struck off to the city in November of 2010. The dispersment worksheet shows Garland ISD would receive a total of $2,568.39. And then the last two are, there's a proposal from Sufi Properties, Inc. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. The first property is 541 Henderson Circle, and they've offered $12,000 for that property. This property was struck off to the city in June of '12, and the dispersment worksheet shows that Garland ISD would receive a total of $25,3909. And the next property that they would like to purchase is at 325 Davidson Circle in the amount of $15,000, and this property was struck off to the city in November of '10. And the dispersment worksheet shows Garland ISD would receive a total of $5,708.30. Are there any questions on any of these properties?
Any questions with regard to those? Okay, Ms. Holmes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. For the remaining items, then, that are on our consent agenda, specifically A, D, and E, is there proposed action with regard to those items?
I'll make a motion that we approve the list of qualified investment brokers, the tax refunds, and the offers from Judson Stafford, Sufi Properties, Inc., and Michael and Kimberly Turner.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That item passes six-zero. All right, the next item is, or next section is action item with regard to consideration of board authorization to sign an electricity contract. Mr. Booker.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lambert, to the board members, to Dr. Morrison, as we've done in the past, the district has presented a resolution that's been approved by General Counsel authorizing the superintendent or deputy superintendent to enter into a contract for electricity. We've done this in the past. Due to the electricity prices only being firm the day of the submission, district needs authorization to enter into those contracts when we see the best price available.
Is there any discussion with regard to the, to the report? Not, is there proposed action?
I move approval of giving board authority to the superintendent or his designate to be able to purchase electricity.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution as stated in our agenda. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, please indicate whether you support the proposed resolution by raising your hand. That passes six-zero. All right, it is now 7:24, and we will move into executive session based upon Government Code 551071 and Government Code 551074. Well, here we are, back on the record at 9:18, and I will certify that no matters were discussed in our closed session other than those listed on our agenda and as stated before we entered open session, or closed session, sorry. It came to my attention while we were in the break that, that in doing our motion with regard to our bids, that it was not clear that we voted on both the new and the renewal bids. So what we did was we voted on the renewal bid, I mean, I'm sorry, the new bids. See, I'm almost creating confusion again. That we voted on the new bids, but not the renewal bids. So I, having pulled 6C2, is there a motion with regard to 6C1 through, 1 and 3 through 7?
Move to approve the renewal bids with the exception of 6C2 as printed in the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes six-zero. Is there any other business or motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.